Order of the City Commission meeting of Monday, December 7th. Records should note that we have four commissioners present. Our first item tonight, we will look at the order of business. Ms. Goss, I understand we have some changes to the order of business.
Yes, we're going to remove on the timetable agenda, the 505 downtown presentation.
Okay.
And then, under the non-timetable agenda items, report two, under administration, on the Wolf landfill negotiations is going to be removed, and we're going to add a report on the TIF district. And then, the second report under engineering on project updates is going to be removed. And then, the project update reports under public works is going to be removed.
Okay, does anybody else have anything that we need to look at with the agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not, we will vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. With that, move to the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss? Not, we'll look for a motion.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion is approved. With that, we will move to the regular agenda. First item we have in the regular agenda is a fee schedule amendment concerning taxi and bus licenses. Ms. Goss, you're gonna tell us about these changes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The taxi cab ordinance goes into effect as of January 1st, and with that, we require a taxi chauffeur license or a bus omnibus license. The bus omnibus license is not currently on our fee schedule, so this is just adding that to it, and it would remain the same as a taxi license at $50. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, resolution number, Ms. Goss?
Forty-six dash 2015.
And it sounds like a housekeeping item.
That's correct.
Any questions, Ms. Goss? If not, we need a motion concerning forty-six, resolution forty-six.
Mr. President, move to approve resolution forty-six dash 2015.
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Next, we have a new ordinance, first reading of an ordinance on taxi cab ordinance. Ms. Goss?
Thank you. We met with the taxi cab and bus companies to discuss the licensing and other requirements with the ordinance going into effect, and there were a couple of issues that came up that this ordinance addresses. First is allowing dispatchers to ride along with drivers for safety issues. Some of the companies have dispatchers ride along so that the actual driver is not taking those dispatch calls, so the ordinance would allow that, as well as, we currently describe buses and omnibuses as seven to 14 passengers, or being able to carry seven to 14 passengers. But we have some companies that have smaller vehicles that are used just like a bus or shuttle service, so this proposed ordinance changes that to four or more passengers, as long as it's being used in the same manner. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, this is first reading of an ordinance, so we will open the meeting to the public. If anybody from the public would like to discuss this ordinance, please step forward at this time and give us your comments. Anybody from the public? If not, we will close the public hearing portion of this and look for comments or a motion. Ordinance number?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading. Any further discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. And we have another ordinance, Ms. Goss. First reading.
Yes, this would be first reading of ordinance number sixteen oh one. This is for the tobacco portion of the code. Staff has been working with the Southwest District Health Unit to revise the city code to adopt and approve on the new tobacco and electronic smoking device regulations that went into effect in the state on August 1st. The proposed revision includes a stricter definition of tobacco products, which would have the effect of requiring vape shops to get a city tobacco license, and essentially level the playing field between those selling tobacco products and tobacco-like products such as the vapes. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions from commissioners? If not, again, this is first reading of ordinance sixteen oh one, so we will open this to the public as well. Anybody from the public who would like to comment on this proposed ordinance, first reading, please come forward and make your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, we will close the public hearing having to do with this ordinance. Anything else from commissioners? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Make motion to approve ordinance number sixteen oh one, first reading.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Okay, we will continue here. Ms. Goss, we're gonna talk about a Mida bond, huh?
Yes, the Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center has approached a city looking for its willingness to issue a Mida bond if they would need it. They have talked about it being up to $1.5 million. With a Mida bond, the city does not have any liability. The city essentially acts as a pass-through to allow the Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center to get a lower interest rate on the loan. So what they're looking for here is just a motion from the commission, whether they would be willing to support that if it was needed in the future.
Okay, if we do this, we don't need anything more for domestic violence to be able to show a bonding agent, a lender, or anything else? We simply need the motion on the books?
We would need a motion. Once we were actually going to, if they came to us and said that they were for sure moving forward with it, it would require a resolution at that time. Right now, they just want to see if the commission is willing to support that.
Other questions from commissioners?
We sponsor various other programs like this as a pass-through, and personally, I don't have any problem with this program either. It's a good program. I would support it.
Yeah, we have the expertise to help them service it and get everything up and running. It would be relatively easy task for us to work on.
Well, I think we've expressed our support for the project, and this is one more way for us to do that. So, we would simply need a motion representing our support for the Mida bond.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on this motion? If not, Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Okay, we are moving right along to liquor licenses.
Yes, this is the 2016 renewals of the liquor licenses. All of the companies have submitted their renewals, except for Dickinson Investments, also known as Hawks Point, did not return their renewal application for the restaurant on-sale license. Everything else is in and paid. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, Ms. Goss, have we been in contact? I understand we send the letters out or the notices, but have we been in contact otherwise with Hawks Point?
We have. We've had multiple conversations with them and sent them out a final letter, letting them know we still required those, and did not hear anything back.
Okay, any questions concerning the liquor license renewal?
I make a recommendation to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the liquor licenses? If not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. And we're doing the same thing with tobacco licenses tonight, correct?
That's correct. These are also the 2016 renewals. These ones are for the tobacco licenses. All the tobacco license applications were returned. The only difference from last year is the Eagle Club no longer sells tobacco, so they will not be included.
And I expect if the tobacco ordinance that we started on tonight ends up passing, we will have additional businesses on this list next year.
That's correct. I believe it would just be one or two additional.
Okay, any questions concerning the tobacco license?
Make motion to approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the tobacco licenses? Not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. All right, Ms. Goss, I understand you're gonna take the job description for the curator?
That's correct. This position will be a non-exempt and falls into Class Four, Grade Six, with a score of 725 points. The position requires a bachelor's degree in biology, paleontology, museum studies, or other relevant field. It also requires one to three years of experience working with museum collections and science education outreach. The museum coordinator will supervise this position. The Civil Service Commission and staff recommend approval.
Okay, Ms. Goss, now we don't have Ms. Nomenek with us tonight. My question was going to be the organization structure. Who will this person report to?
They'll report to the museum coordinator.
Okay.
A follow-up question to that. The requirements that were put in here, do they meet the requirements that Dakota Dinosaur Museum had put in the contract with us as far as building positions?
They do, and we also worked with Dan Ingram, our former museum coordinator, as well as Clint Boyd, the senior paleontologist with the North Dakota Geological Survey, in creating this job description.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the job description.
Mr. President, I would move we approve the job description.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Okay, Ms. Goss, you can go ahead with reports.
The first is the Southwest water rates for 2016. The water rates have increased from this year. The current rate is $3.94 per thousand gallons, and it is increasing to $4.15 per thousand gallons in 2016, which is a 21-cent increase. We did account for this increase in the 2016 fee schedule that was passed in October. The only other rate that affects the city is the industrial use rate, which is remaining the same for 2016 at $22 per thousand gallons. The other report that I have is on the TIF district. As you recall, we were working with AXIA and for the old St. Joseph's Hospital in creating a TIF district. They did let us know last week that they have canceled that contract with St. Joseph's, so that will not be moving forward. So we will not be moving forward with creating that TIF district. Sean did meet with Reed Raymond of St. Joseph's today in discussing the ability to move forward with a TIF or a Renaissance district if they do have another potential buyer that would have a similar use for that, but nothing is moving forward with it for now.
Do you know if that buyer, I know they were up against some deadlines that they had to meet otherwise it got taken off the table. Is that what happened, or are they totally?
In their letter, they indicated that one of the larger health service providers that they were looking at for use of the building had pulled out, and they had begun looking for another one to take its place, and were unable to find anything.
I think it's fair to say, though, that this had to do with the softening in the housing market.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, Ms. Goss, if I could, just stepping back to the water rates for a minute, and I'm gonna be repetitive, but for the public, these rates, this rate increase is not in addition to what we did last summer, increasing rates.
No, that's correct. This is not in addition. This is just, our city rates are based off of Southwest Waters' rates because we purchased the water from them. So this is, we had increased the rates in preparation for receiving this, and then we just received this, so we wanted to report that there was, in fact, the increase, but it's already taken into account in our rate schedule, so there won't be any other increases based off of this.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions for Ms. Goss? Pulling extra duty tonight. Okay, I think we can move to public safety, and Chief Seabock has a couple of reports for us from the fire department.
President Jackson, commissioners, tonight I'll present the third quarter report of fire department activities for the Dickinson Fire Department. You see two graphs on this slide. The one to the left is an indicator of the third quarter activities. The graph on the right side is a year-to-date activities graph. We had 127 calls for service in the third quarter of 2015, in the categories of fires, good intent, service calls, EMS calls, and false alarms. What I'd like to draw your attention to is, in September of 2015, we had 33 incidents that month. The last time we had a month that was less than 40 incidents per month was April of 2014. Otherwise, our calls for service per month have always been tracking in the low 40s to mid 50s. So we'll have to go back to April of 2014 to find a month where we only had 30-some calls for service. Kind of an interesting note there, I think.
And Chief, if I could interrupt you, did you see any certain category really dropping in September?
We actually have, and that is cooking fires. Third quarter fire prevention and public education activities. Fire prevention efforts to be proactive in the community really center around our fire prevention and our public education activities. The Fire Prevention Bureau gets out into the community in such areas as fire extinguisher demos at a residential care facility, babysitting lectures, babysitting clinics. We took part in the Kid Fit Program at the West River Community Center in August. We also did a safety presentation at the Central Fire Station. In addition, the community supports the fire department in many ways, and some of those I need to touch on. We received a $5,000 donation from Marathon Oil. We used that money to purchase rescue gloves, auto extrication-specific gloves, and flashlights. We received a $2,000 donation from Oxy that will go towards the recruitment and retention efforts on our volunteer fire department side of things. A slide that we didn't get made in time but is extremely important and under fire prevention is our activities concerning fire inspections. In the third quarter, our inspectors did a total of 475 inspections. 198 of those were routine, 181 of those were follow-up. And our line firefighters are now out also doing inspections, basic company-level inspections under the guidance of our fire inspectors and our fire marshal. We're trying to close that gap that was created by the impact of our rapid growth of two years between inspections, and it's gonna be a slow process, but we're working on it. Third quarter department activities and training, we had 129.4 total hours committed by our members. Regular monthly trainings included topics as auto extrication, apparatus operations, hose operations, our live fire props at our training facility, rapid intervention team training, ventilation, personal protective equipment. In addition to that, special operations training takes place every month, pump operations, ethanol response, the North Dakota Firefighter Association Courage to be Safe Program, and Fire Officer One Training for Fire Officer Certification. We also were able to send three of our firefighters to the Creed by Rail Derailment Training in Pueblo, Colorado. I think we're right around nine total from our department that have been able to attend that now. Special operations training again included rope work, low-angle rescue, ropes and rappelling, our probation training, which is our new firefighters. We have six in the program right now. Apparatus operations, water supply, air pack, and probation testing. In addition, medical and CPR, first aid instructor certification training. We brought on a couple new people certified as instructors. International Association of Arson Investigation Conference was attended in Jamestown. And special operations training, we had some people that attended a 40-hour training session in Bismarck, and I'll touch on that with this slide. Fire Inspector Selly, Fire Engineer Hartman, firefighter Tyler Scott, firefighter Tyler Berger attended a 40-hour technician-level trench rescue training where they got that certification as a technician. Fire Marshal Deb Barrows, Fire Inspector Mark Selly attended the International Association of Arson Investigators training. Third quarter department activities, in addition to the training and the inspections and the code enforcement, we're active in the community. July 4th, we again hosted a breakfast at the Sunset Senior Citizens Center. We raised $1,542 above expenses, and by the choice of our own members, that money in its entirety is given back to the Sunset Seniors. The fire department doesn't keep any of it. City of Dickinson Fire Department also took part in the Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot Campaign. This year, we set a new record for ourselves. We raised $3,285. Also, fire departments in the state of North Dakota set a new record for the state in total raised. We also took part in the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, as we do every year with the police department. And again, it was a successful blood drive. United Blood Services always benefits from any of the blood drives in the community, and we always try to do our part. And we had a all-staff open house, police and fire, for the Public Safety Center that took place August 25th, prior to the official. Are there any questions on the third quarter activity report? The next portion that I'd like to get into concerns the ISO report.
Chief, one question.
Yes, sir.
A couple slides ago. You don't have to go back to it, but talk about Oxy with the donation of $2,000 for recruitment and retention. What specifically are your ideas for recruitment?
Well, what we do with monies we receive like that, is that is money that's used to purchase things like fire department t-shirts, quite honestly, or fire department emblem jackets. It may be used to purchase awards for firefighters, like five-year service pins, things like that. It may be used for ad campaigns. It may be used for luncheon, quite honestly, after a meeting, things like that. It helps fund those things that helps us, we believe, to shore up the recruitment and the retention aspect of our volunteer department. That helps fund that. Any other questions on the third quarter report?
Chief, maybe we do have a 455 timetable agenda item that I think will take a short period of time. Why don't we squeeze that in and then get you back up there?
Sure, if you wish.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Our 450 item is a Future Land Use Map Amendment ordinance change that Mr. Hadley's gonna go through with us.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. This would be ordinance 1602, I believe. It's the first reading. It's a future land use map amendment to the comprehensive plan from residential to commercial in diamond acres off of 21st Street. It's about a 15-acre parcel, went through the planning commission with a recommendation of approval, and staff would recommend approval. One added note, this particular item will also need to go through a zone change replat, and we're possibly looking at a planned unit development for the mixed use and the separation of residential from the proposed commercial. So this is the first step that allows them to move forward.
Okay, so, we're going to pass the first reading of the ordinance 1602 tonight, or deny? Any questions from commissioners? If not, this isn't ordinance, so we will open this up to the public. Anybody who has comments concerning this amendment to the future land use map should come forward and give us any comments that you have. Anything from the public? If not, we will close the public hearing, look for a motion from commissioners.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Chief, why don't we let you start? If we end up a little bit late on this next public hearing, we'll do that.
I'll talk fast.
No, this is important, so...
Okay. Towards the end of the year, I guess it was mid-year of 2015, the Dickinson City Commission approved the Insurance Service Office, working with the Dickinson Fire Department, to do a evaluation, a community fire service performance review of our structural fire protection capabilities. That report was finished towards the end of October. I believe all the commissioners received a copy of that report, and I just wanna touch, I can't touch on the entirety of it tonight, but just a couple of points that I think are important. The ISO Performance Review Summary Sheet, which is on page five of the information in the report, highlights a couple of areas that are marked room for improvement, and those are the areas I wanna touch on this evening. One of the things that's important about the review, or what we refer to as the ISO review, approximately 80% of fire insurance premiums do take ISO's public protection classification rating into consideration. The class can be, not sued, but used, it's a type O, to approximate the money saved on property insurance due to a jurisdiction's level of fire protection. Percent savings is based on the isolated impact that the public protection classification class has on the lost cost. The Dickinson Fire Department is a Class Four department, and it places the Dickinson community in the unique position of being able to enjoy moderate to full insurance credit on its premiums. What's important about this next slide, and you'll find that, Table 4 of Page 26 in your actual report, this is based off of actual premiums. This isn't the best guess on the part of ISO. This is actually based on premiums collected, and it shows the difference of classifications from a three, four, five, and 10, and the percentage of savings based on business owners, commercial property, and homeowners. One of the areas that we were tagged a room for improvement on was fire frequency. Now, one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, most of the data in this report came from our most rapid-growth years. came from our most rapid-growth years. And our fire frequency was calculated by the number of fire incidents per 1,000 people. It is an indicator of fire prevention, success in the community. It's somewhat skewed in our report, however, because of the rapid growth we were experiencing, which isn't necessarily the norm. But yet, it does show that we were impacted, and we were impacted negatively during those years in our fire calls, in our calls for service, our incident report. Room for improvement here again, this graph shows that the Dickinson Fire Department had 1.98 incidents per 1,000 population. Our peer group had 1.24. North Dakota's average was 1.12. The national average was 1.46. Needless to say, during our rapid-growth time, we were very busy. The city of Dickinson, for its size, and the Dickinson Fire Department, for its size and its makeup, was extremely busy. The other area that shows room for improvement is personnel. We scored the lowest in personnel per population. Dickinson Fire Department scored a .2 for on-duty personnel, 1.4 for on-call personnel. Our peer groups was a .2 for on-duty, 2.6 for on-call. North Dakota was 1.1 on-duty, 1.4 on-call. National average, 1.1 on-duty, 2.6 on-call. Staffing is a significant element of successful outcomes. It needs to be maintained to meet the needs of the community, not just in the full-time aspect of things, which we're trying to present to the commission annually in a very responsible manner, we hope, but also on the volunteer end of things. We're a combination department. The majority of our department is still made up of volunteers from the community coming forward. And it takes a considerable time commitment from our people. What you get in return, what the city of Dickinson gets in return for that volunteer commitment, is a professional firefighter. They're trained to the same standards, they take the same courses, they spend the same hours as that full-time career firefighter does. It absolutely is not for everybody, but it is a tremendous way to give back to the community. And for those special few people out there that are looking for the most unique way they can be involved in a community, that is probably the most challenging thing they'll ever take on, considering the return, I would ask them to contact us about being a volunteer The report does a lot for us commissioners in future planning. There's a lot of maps that I know that you've seen that are included in the report that help us target hazard populations, the elderly, the young. It helps us target hazard occupancies. I'm very pleased with the overall report. I think it's going to be very useful to us. I just wanted to do a quick summary of it tonight, just a brief synopsis of a couple of the areas that are definitely a concern for us. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thanks very much, Chief. You know, I thought the report was really interesting, and you've chosen to show us the things tonight that we do need improvement. We need to recognize that. But for the public, the public should know that your department had a number of categories that scored really nice marks on, too, and you haven't talked about those tonight.
I haven't, and I appreciate you mentioning that. Of, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, of eight basic, large categories, we had two that were room for improvement, and kind of a subcategory that you can maybe count as three, but we had two areas, company deployment, public protection classification, that was strong. We were strong. We had three areas where we were average. So overall, our room-for-improvement areas are small in comparison. They're important, they're extremely important. We hold on to that Class IV by 1.79 points. And if we lose that Class IV, we do run the risk of regressing to a Class V, and there is an impact to the community in insurance premium.
Sure.
But the point is, overall, we had a strong showing. We did. We have a couple areas of concern, but we had a strong showing. So, thank you.
Chief, I know a couple years ago, you had a slide that also showed that dollar-for-dollar, the city of Dickinson, the citizens, what it costs per head to have a fire department. We were the lowest, I believe, in the state.
We were very reasonable, yes. We'll try to have that information for you with our year-end report again. We'd like to include that again.
And that's a two-way cutting knife also. I mean, you know, I mean, it's okay to be lowest, but like you said, we're right on that line of losing our class rating to where maybe we've got to cost a little more to keep that class rating.
One of the things we struggle with is a challenge that's being, that struggles nationwide with volunteers. The volunteer fire service nationwide is in a state of decline. It's because that, like I mentioned earlier, there is a lot asked of a volunteer firefighter. You're not a volunteer firefighter. When you get off that truck, or when you respond to that call, you are a professional firefighter, and it's a tremendous savings to the community. But it becomes more and more difficult in this day and age for people to commit to it. And that's the problem, not just in Dickinson, North Dakota, but nationwide. And so we try to balance that, and we're trying to do that here, with a full-time complement and a volunteer contingent that works together, and that is strong enough to make sure we address the needs of the community. And that's our balancing act that we have to work with.
Thanks very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to our 5 o'clock timetable, agenda item. Mr. Hadley, you're going to walk us through that?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you again. Resolution 47-2015, it's a special use permit for consumer services, special use for Jesse Coons. It's a small engine repair facility located at 3731 114th Avenue Southwest. It's on a three-quarter acre site. The planning commission and city staff would recommend approval. It is within the ETZ, and there was a number of property owners, adjacent property owners that signed a petition in favor of this application.
Okay, any questions from commissioners, first of all? If not, this is a public hearing, so again, we'll ask if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on this special use permit. Please come forward. Come up for me. Any comments from the public? Not, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Make the motion to approve Resolution 47-2015.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any more discussion on this special use permit? If not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Okay, we will move back to the regular agenda to engineering. Mr. Kubus, you have a couple, three items tonight.
Thank you, President Jackson, commissioners. The first item on the engineering agenda is a special improvement district for the Fisher's East Side Second Street Improvement District. If you remember, we had approved the preliminary engineering report for this project a few meetings ago. I believe the resolution in front of you today is consistent with the district and the engineering report that was approved. We have updated some of the construction schedule that's contained in that preliminary engineering report. So I believe the motion today is to approve the resolution and the engineering report. Is that correct, Attorney Goss?
Yes, that's correct.
So our next step would be to approve this proposed resolution, creating the special improvement district, and approve the engineer's report, which declares that the improvements, or by approving those, you declare that the improvements are necessary. We have a policy of notifying all property owners by letter, which goes above the state's notification requirement, which is just advertisement in the newspaper. Once the notification is made, along with publishing the resolution once a week for two consecutive weeks, there's a 30-day period from the date of that first publication in which all the owners in this district that will be considered tonight, all those property owners have the ability to protest their property being included in the district. And if more than 50% of those property area, by area, if those owners protest, it will be a bar to the resolution. However, the project could still move forward as proposed, but cannot be assessed to the properties. With that, the engineering report, the resolution is in your packet, and staff would recommend approval.
Ms. Goss, are you going to let us do both of these approvals with one motion?
Yes, the resolution actually includes creation of the district and approval of the engineering report, and it is Resolution 48-2015.
All right. Any commissioners have any questions of Mr. Kubus or Ms. Goss about this improvement If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve 48-2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion concerning this resolution? Not, we will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. Mr. Kubus, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is another special improvement district for what we had been calling the cook lighting special improvement district. Preliminary engineering report, as it's written today, includes the cook first through fourth additions, the cook metal heels first through fourth, and the country oaks second addition or a portion thereof. This preliminary engineering report has been updated since we last visited again. We discussed the type of poles to be used at our last meeting, and further discussion with city staff, the decision was made to revise this report again with a decorative metal pole and fixture. I've had a handout at each of your desks that just has a, I guess, a rendering of that pole, and on the flip side of it is the lights that you've seen installed around town. So this would be more of a decorative pole, a little bit shorter, probably a little more ornate, but it did affect the cost of the estimated cost of the district slightly. So the costs in the report have been updated to include this decorative pole. Again, similar to the previous project, the next step would be to approve the proposed resolution, which creates the district, approve the engineer's report, and declare that the improvements are necessary. Again, we have a policy of notifying the property owners by letter, and once this notification is made, along with publishing the resolution for two consecutive weeks, we'd have that 30-day protest period. Again, the same state law would apply if more than 50% of the properties by area protest that, it would be a bar to proceeding with this improvement district. So again, we've made some slight modifications to the engineer's report. The district hasn't changed since you last saw this, only the cost estimate and the type of light. So with that, staff would recommend approval, and I'd open it up to any questions you might have.
Okay, questions for Mr. Kubus? I only have one, Mr. Kubus. These specials, the term on these specials are 10 years?
That's been the policy in the past on residential districts, which this would be, would be a 10-year assessment period.
Okay. Anybody else, questions? Not, we'll look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll give the second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on 49-2015? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. I think we'll come back to you, Mr. Kubus. We have a 5:15 timetable, agenda item to discuss a downtown improvement district. And Kristy Schwartz, I think, is with us tonight to discuss this. And Ms. Schwartz, you're on your own tonight because Mr. Kessel isn't with us.
He's not.
He took sick today, so. Thank you.
Mayor Jackson, city commissioners, thank you for allowing me time to present a proposal that will help facilitate and support the city's downtown plan that you were to see this evening. My name is Kristy Schwartz, and I am the current president of the Board of the Downtown Dickinson Association. The Downtown Dickinson Association, just a little background for you, was established in December of 2013. We are a 501(c)(6) organization that is governed by a board of 11 community members, which consist of downtown property owners, downtown business owners and managers, as well as the chamber executive director, and four representatives from the community at large. Starting in July of 2014, we began accepting membership applications. Our association currently has 32 members, and that is with no official drive for membership at this point. It is our vision to work together with business, government, and the community to enhance the vitality of downtown for the benefit of our entire community. The mission of the Downtown Dickinson Association is to create a vibrant downtown through effective development, communication, and promotion and education. It is our goal to partner with the city of Dickinson to enhance the long-term development of downtown Dickinson, as well as provide community events that will serve to improve the quality of life in the Dickinson area. The objective of this proposal is to help facilitate and support the efforts of the city of Dickinson and the downtown plan that I hope you get to see soon. As you know, there is a downtown improvement district currently in place that has been there for a number of years that expires at the end of 2015. Our proposal is twofold. To put in play the process of initiating a new downtown improvement district that would begin in 2016 and would provide funding that would help support the efforts outlined in the city's downtown plan. And secondly, to begin a capital campaign that would raise 2.5 million in private funds that would be used to help build the downtown plaza. The downtown improvement district shall contain two units, described in the attached resolution as Core Unit 1 and Unit 2, and outlined in the attached diagram. Core Unit 1 is in the gray, and Unit 2 is in the green. Unit 2 will be assessed at 50% of the amounts assessed to the Core Unit 1 property owners. So for example, if Core Unit 1 were assessed at $400 per commercial property annually, then Unit 2 would be assessed at $200 per commercial property annually. It shall remain in effect for a period of five years, much like the expiring improvement district, and at which time it could be renewed, revised, or dissolved as decided by the city commission. The city commission shall contract with an entity familiar with and active in the downtown improvement district to manage downtown improvement district services. Our hope is that that would be the Downtown Dickinson Association. Services would include the programming of the downtown plaza- Services would include the programming of the downtown plaza. The approximate annual assessment would be 100,000. The approximate number currently of commercial property owners in the Core Unit One is right around 200. This would equate to approximately a $400 annual assessment for them, which is less than some current, some property owners are currently being assessed under the expiring downtown improvement district. Conversations with several downtown property owners indicate support of this type of an assessment. The second thing, the capital campaign to raise the matching funds that would help facilitate the building of the downtown plaza. Our commitment is to reach the goal of 2.5 million dollars in private funding, the campaign to begin January 1st of 2016 and reach our goal by December 31st of 2017. We are hopeful that the city would begin designs and plans for our plaza in 2016 and upon successful efforts of meeting our portion of a fundraising goal, begin construction of the plaza in 2017. Our long-term strategy will be to help create the type of revitalization that will generate continued development in our downtown. Our downtown will become a destination for our community, for shopping, for restaurants, for arts, thriving business and for residential opportunities. With continued growth, the DDA or the Downtown Dickinson Association will be able to advocate for the downtown plaza as well as the longer-term goals of the overall downtown plan, also coordinate efforts with the City of Dickinson, business owners and property owners and facilitate change that will benefit our entire community. We look forward to working with the City of Dickinson, supporting your efforts to improve our city. We are confident that we can meet the challenges ahead and stand ready to partner with you to deliver an effective solution. Thank you for your consideration. I would ask for any questions that you have.
I have a couple of questions, just for the general public's knowledge, where are possible locations for the plaza?
As indicated in the plan that Sean Kessel will share with you at a later date, the current location of the downtown plaza is located at the park that is located next to the old Ivanhoe Hotel across the street from the brick house.
It's your intention to not only have this redistricted and make the district larger so that there's more participation and better availability, but I would suspect with this one ending at the end of 2015, we have some money in that fund. What is our intention with that?
I can speak on that a little bit. I know with budgeting, we were talking earlier today, there's about 190,000 in that account. A couple of years ago, we discussed that, I think it was around 75,000 or more, that, no, there would be 75,000, what was in there would be used for a parking lot just east of West Winds.
Right.
Okay. At our budget meeting, we did talk about that that is a commitment that we made. We couldn't do it in the last year because of some tunneling that had to happen underneath the railroad and so on. So we did make a commitment for 75 to that amount. We also talked about striping, parking spots around some places downtown and I can't remember what the third one was, but you know, so if you threw 25,000 on that 75, you know, if we retained 100,000 of it, you know, we could use 90,000 to support this type of program. I think that's worth sitting today.
In addition to the new fees that would be created?
In addition to the new fees, yeah.
If I may, we do have a follow-up proposal for those funds with our understanding being that they had to be used for parking improvements in downtown.
You're correct, the improvement district that was created years ago by the downtown improvement district was that it specifically mentioned parking in it, you know, so this new district would be broadened to include a little more use of the funds.
Well, that was going to be my question because I know that the old district was to be used for seal coating, striping and maintenance in the parking lots. I'm not seeing any of those costs in here, what am I missing?
We understand that as well and so the next agenda item is our proposal for use of those funds. Specifically for parking improvement.
Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Well, I think that, I guess I think the most compelling thing is that this isn't or wasn't initiated by city staff or city commission, it's not something that we're pushing through for the downtown district, so I think it's really important that the businesses are who are coming forward to us wanting to reestablish the downtown improvement district, revamp it and they really have a goal in mind and have put some time and energy, thought into what they would like the downtown to become. And I think if you look backward, last summer since they began and you look at the Aliva Five events, the downtown business events, Trick or Trump comes to mind and there's been a lot of vibrancy and activity in the downtown and I think anything that we can do as a commission to support this effort moving forward would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Oatmans.
I agree with you. I wish that Mr. Kessel were here tonight so we could see all the presentations that we had intended to see. I guess we all get sick.
We're not making any specific decisions tonight.
That's right.
So we can certainly bring this back at the next agenda and see the big picture of everything that.
Sure.
But I think we have to be ready for a decision.
I think so too.
At that meeting to whether renew that district or not.
Right. How does that work?
So it wouldn't actually be a renewal of the district, we would be creating a new district. This one, in order to renew it or change a district, it has to be done before October of the year previous, so it would have had to been done by this October. Additionally, we can't create just a broad district. Our code requires it to be specific to one or multiple things and for this type, we could put it as a street improvement and boulevard improvement district, but we are limited, it has to be water, sewer, street, boulevard, flood protection or parking. So we would have to look at those and work with the downtown association to make sure that we create the district so it includes everything that they're wanting but still meets the state and city code requirements.
There must be some kind of flexibility or ambiguity that we're able to, because other communities create downtown improvement districts specifically, you look at Rapid and the improvements that they made.
And there is and that's why I suggested street and boulevard because those include things like sidewalks, trees, grass, other more beautification type things. So I think that, and I'd have to look at them a little more in depth, but I think that those two would cover everything that they were looking to do with this district.
If we want some broad strokes as far as what we're able to use the money for and what we're able to do.
Okay, it sounds like we have a little more work to do. Ms. Schwartz, anything else that you'd like to?
No, I guess I would just make a comment that it was under, it was our understanding that under the North Dakota Code 40-22 dot one dash zero one, that that kind of outlined what these improvement districts at the state level, what they could incorporate. And in talking with Sean Kessel, understood that maybe that it could also be incorporated to use for the partnership and servicing that downtown square, that kind of thing.
Right, and I think there is, like I said, I'll just have to look at it more fully to make sure that we name it properly so that we comply with all the code.
So the good news is that we have more time to look at this and we're not under a December 31st deadline because the deadlines already passed, our real goal is to get everything established for 2016.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think that it would be fair for you to leave here tonight sensing support for the request. We'll have to work on the detail of it and make sure we're doing it right.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And we'll move into the 5:25, which is the parking presentation.
All right. President Jackson, Commissioners, Rob Remark, I'm a member of the Downtown Association Board here representing this conversation about the parking proposal and I think it, as Kristi mentioned, really abuts nicely to the conversation that she was just having and it touches on the things that you guys already just touched on, just in your conversation as you do know more about this than the Downtown Association may as you've talked through it in the past and made some of these decisions regarding the West Winds parking, paving and things of that nature. So what you're seeing in front of you in summation is a proposal from the Downtown Association, just making sure that those current funds that have been dedicated to parking enhancements in the downtown Dickinson area that have been contributed from the downtown organizations, property owners, et cetera, are, you know, remain for enhancing parking and then we suggest a couple of strategies that we have heard support of and that we would at least like to present to you and that's kind of the idea of the proposal at this time. You'll see that there's kind of two components to the proposal, phase one and phase two. Those phases could be separated in time or they could run sequentially one from the other, but more or less, again, the summary is that there are these funds and so instead of them disappearing, making sure that we are able to use them to enhance parking in downtown Dickinson and we have just started to touch, start to begin to touch on some suggestions that the Downtown Association has had. We've met with some city management, we've met with the police department and the fire chief to just talk about and we'd like to present this and say that we don't propose like this is the construction document of how this needs to look as much as these are some suggestions on how we could increase parking in downtown Dickinson and that we would like to work through it with city staff and city engineering to make sure that it meets all code compliance standards and that it works well for the fire department and for the police department and things of that nature. So at the top of the document, you have phase one and phase two options. Phase one is really just looking at putting those dollars that are in that account towards striping, whether that's doing some striping that is parallel parking, striping and some little crosshatches so that people, so that we can maximize the use of parallel parking on the blocks that they exist so that three people can't park in front of the post office and then that's it, so that we can maximize and try to get seven to eight cars in front of some of these blocks. Phase two really touches on the idea of trying to bring up two-hour parking signage and a parking authority. Depending on the amount of money in the fund, which we understand is around 191,000 and there needs to be some taken out for commitments that have already been made to pave West Winds, we think that there can be a significant amount of striping enhancements in downtown Dickinson as well as some signage, as well as a good jump for the phase two, looking at a parking authority and being able to fund that for a year even out of that fund. And then there's the hope that that would generate some money to support itself and we believe that there's some performas that should be completed, talking with some other cities, et cetera, to kind of try to get an idea of how much funds that parking authority could kind of generate for themselves to pay for their own, to pay for that, their own service. That would be run through the police department and we've talked to the police chief about that and his support for that if that is something that the commission, you know, would like to see and study moving forward. I guess at that point, you know, I think we're, the proposal itself touches on the reasons, the people that benefit, we really look at the beneficiaries of this proposal being the property owners, patrons of Dickinson that want to come down to downtown DE to go to cafes and restaurants and struggle to find parking, as well as just Dickinson at a whole, as there's been a lot of different presentations about how, and I think Sean would have really touched on this nicely today had he had the chance about when you invest in your downtown, it enhances the entire community, communities that have really strong vibrant downtowns and very successful communities along the extremities and the larger area of that. And so we're just continuing to try to work and to present things to you to help just continue to support the downtown. So I think instead of reading everything, I'll just open it up for any questions that you have at this time, I know you guys have some thoughts already.
You know, regardless of the detail of the proposal, I just think it's really invigorating that downtown is getting together and looking at this. There are pros and cons with diagonal parking that we're going to have to look at with engineering, public works, but makes no difference to me, I think it's just great that conversations are occurring.
Yeah, and that's kind of our take on it too is, you know, maybe the parallel, like the diagonal parking, that's going to require 26 feet minimum width in the road. So you know, we initially started looking at First Street as being, you know, kind of a key area that we would like to see, you know, think that diagonal parking would, well, that road is 50 feet wide. You get pretty tight in certain restrictions depending on the building height. So what we learned very quickly in conversations with some of the different city departments is that we're going to have to look specifically block to block at what blocks even will allow for, you know, for diagonal parking. So none of that, we're not looking today to come and say, we want it on this block and this block, on this block, we're actually, we're going to just try to really stem off of what Sean would present, Mr. Kessel would present as far as the downtown, there's been a parking study that's already been done and we would just like to follow it and to just get as much parking striped and talk about signage and how this could benefit the community, so.
Well, and when you look at diagonal parking in downtown, a good example would be in front of the Arcade Riff Store, they have diagonal parking.
Right out here.
Yeah, right out here in front of City Hall and it actually does work and you do get more spots per square feet than if you have parallel parking. So I would agree, there are definitely some areas that could utilize that, increase the parking downtown. I think, again, all of your presentations would have been much stronger if they came on the heel of Sean's presentation, but again, nothing has to be decided tonight. So we're in good shape and it really is invigorating. I feel like the Downtown Association have passed and kind of languished to find their consensus and what they wanted to have happen. It's really nice to see so many businesses coming together and the vitality downtown is easily recognized, I can't imagine what it would be like if everything would have been like, so.
I think that the crux of what we need, of what we're hearing tonight though is the request to do something, whatever the detail is, utilizing the old downtown district. And I think I'm hearing that nobody will have a problem with that.
Excellent.
So I would encourage you to keep working with staff and make it work with what we do have a vision for in the future.
Absolutely.
And we'll just move forward.
Great, well, we look forward for the opportunity and thank you very much for your time.
I got a comment here. You talk about the two phases, you know, definitely, you know, the phase one, the parallel and diagonal striping and that parking lot and everything, you know, we can get that done and everything. The phase two, when you talk about two-hour parking signage and regulate parking and everything, you know, we can't avoid, the elephant in the room is that if we're going to put up signage for parking, that's going to force people off, we've got to have a place for them to park.
Right.
Okay, because right now the streets are full obviously, which is from employees, which is why we're addressing this. So we do have to take a strong look at a parking garage downtown and I know we've had discussions on that and we got drawings on that and that can be from one level to two levels to three levels, but anyway, that is one thing that we have to address if we're going to put phase two into force.
The parking study kind of indicates that currently the parking lots are not, you know, they're at a certain percentage, each one of them at different times of day full, so there is opportunity for employees and business people to park in those parking lots. lots currently. Now, absolutely in the future, well, we need some additional parking, and Sean's, the presentation that Sean has will kind of allude to that as well. I was just going to mention, it's our worry that those dollars that have been assessed by the property, from the property owners, that they will, as of December 31st, go into the general fund. It would be our recommendation to try to make some sort of recommendation that we do something to keep those earmarked for parking improvements.
I don't know that that's the case, but I think there are people smarter than I am concerning that issue, but we'll check that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to guess we can put a line item in the general fund.
We can reserve those. We can reserve those. We can reserve those funds.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move back to Mr. Kubus. You have a couple more things for us in engineering. Mr. Kubus?
Thank you, President Jackson. The next item, Item C, is the Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement. This agreement comes from the DOT, and it's an annual certification that the city is complying with the specific terms and conditions of project maintenance agreements that we've had throughout the years where DOT, or more specifically, federal highway funds were used on those projects. Attached is a, in your packet, is a recent project cost participation and maintenance agreement that includes much of the standard language that those CPM agreements have. Ongoing city efforts to comply with the CPM agreements include removing snow, keeping the grass mowed, replacing signs as needed, general patching efforts, and having encroachments removed from the right-of-way. City staff has reviewed this annual certification, cost participation, and maintenance agreement, and recommends approval. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubus? If not, we need a motion then concerning the agreement.
Please approve the agreement, Mr. President.
A second.
Any more discussion? Now we will vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Kubus.
The next item I have is on the 40th Street Water and Sewer Special Improvement District. As you recall, this project actually was constructed in 2014, late in the year. We moved forward to create that district, or, excuse me, the district was created in 2014, but to move forward this fall as we had final costs. And we're able to do that because of advertising requirement of the state. And so, today, I'd just like to give you an update. We have the project constructed, we have the district approved, all the things we talked about on these prior projects is done for the 40th Street Water and Sewer District. To finish the process out, though, just wanted to give you a summary of what needs to happen to get these assessments on the tax rolls for 2017. It'll have to happen in 2016, but, so, tonight, just giving you an update, our intent would be that this week, we would send out those letters to the landowners that we've talked about. And this is a more formal letter, we have exact costs now, we have all the costs that the city is going to incur on this project, send out those letters. With this period, we don't have the 30-day protest period, this is just a 15-day notification of a public hearing for a special assessment meeting, which, again, these dates could vary by a couple of days, but this is a target schedule. So we would hold a special assessment commission meeting, December 30th. At that meeting, they would certify that, yes, these properties received benefit, and this is the assessment that those properties would receive. We already have those costs calculated and all the supporting paperwork on file. Then we'd publish a notice the next day, it could happen on December 31st, publish the notice. Again, that's another 15-day notice period where it would come back to the commission to hear this assessment. Everything fell into place, that would be on the January 19th meeting, so. It's a short timeframe to wrap this project up, finish things up. Of course, we've had a lot of contact and correspondence with the property owners, they've all received a letter. Recently, the dollar values from those letters really wouldn't change to all the properties that are in the city limits right now. So, not a lot of change on this one at all, just a procedural thing, dotting our i's, crossing our t's, to get this one on the books, so. If there was any questions on this 40th Street project, I'd be happy to put this one to bed in January.
Okay, bottom line is, though, we won't be on the tax rolls for another year.
Correct.
With this particular improvement district, and just need to walk through the procedural aspects now.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Kubus?
That's all I had, unless you had some questions on projects or construction activities you see around? I did have one quick update. We'd sent out a letter for our annual winter shutdown, we had some below zero temperatures here around Thanksgiving, we put a couple-week notification out, and we thought it was so darn cold, we'd shut down construction today. So, we are, you know, that notification went out formally, we've had our winter shutdown as of December 7th. Of course, we're working with folks, it's pretty balmy for December right now, so, there is some construction still going, and we anticipate that while the weather holds, we'll see a little more construction, that's a good thing, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zurov, you have a couple of items for us.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson and Commission. My first item is a change order with Kindred Plumbing and Heating. This is on the West Gravity project, and this is Change Order One. On this project, the construction plans included a crossing of two parallel oil and saltwater pipelines owned by Denbury Onshore LLC. And on the plans, this was, the plan was to use normal utility crossing methods, in other words, digging through that area. Because of the environmental concerns, Denbury decided to require boring of the 30-inch line or that the pipelines be taken out of service. The best and alternate and cost-effective method was to take them out of service, which Denbury did at a cost of $43,455.57. Staff recommends approval of Change Order One for that dollar amount.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zurov concerning the change order? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Please approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Now we will, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries.
My next item, thank you, my next item is an access agreement, and this is right by the List Station 14, which is on the corner of 10th and 21st. This access easement will give the legal access for the List Station 14. The easement is for a small portion of the private road owned by North Park, Inc. List Station 14 is being, we're preparing to bid, redo the list station. We did notice, we didn't have, a small portion of the road was a private road, so we're looking for a legal easement, access easement for that road. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov? We'll need a motion to approve the easement.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now we'll vote, Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. All right. With that, we will move to items from City Commission, and the scheduled item that we have on tonight's agenda is the appointment of a fifth commissioner. I think what we should do is ask Ms. Goss to summarize for us and for the public where we've been, where we are, what actions we need to take.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to us appointing Mr. Jackson as commission president, we have an opening for commission. We had to wait the necessary time to allow the city to petition to force a special election to fill that spot. That time has now lapsed, and we have not received the necessary petition. So at this point, the commission may choose one of three options. Either leave the seat vacant until the upcoming election in June to vote for, to hold a special election to fill that position, or to appoint somebody to fill that commission seat.
Okay. And I think, in our conversations these past weeks, I think I can accurately say that we have consensus that we do want to appoint someone to this position, and if anybody feels differently, that would like to move forward with an election or not appoint, should certainly say so now.
I would agree, Mr. President, we do need to appoint someone. I don't think it'd be fair to the community if they come here with something they need and it's a two-two tie. You know, that doesn't make sense, so. I don't know if anybody else has been contacted, I'm sure they might have recommendations. I had one individual contact me that said he would be interested in filling out the term with, and not intend on running again in June. I know that was a concern, that it might be an unfair advantage for someone that wasn't appointed, you know, over someone that wasn't appointed, you know. So, if you're looking for nominations now?
Is that a little more discussion, I guess?
Yeah, I have been contacted by three former commissioners, all expressing a willingness, in good spirit, to step in with this role. Two of them are here tonight, I think I see two of them. You know, any of the three would do a good job filling out this next six months, so we're going to have the maybe difficult task of choosing from those three, or choosing someone else, as you pointed out, Mr. Steiner. But I think it makes sense to choose a former commissioner, just somebody that...
Based on experience, I would agree with that.
The three that I've heard from are Mr. Joe Frenzel, who served for, I think, 12 years, but then also served, I think, in an appointed position at one point, Mr. Rod Lamblo, who served for a number of months, and Mrs. Shirley Ducart, who I think served two, two-year terms recently. So, those are the three that I've heard from.
Yeah, I guess that the only other inquiries that I've heard of are some people that are starting to throw their hat in the ring for the election in June or the commission seat. And as Commissioner Steiner alluded to, you know, I think that gives any one of them a distinct advantage over the others that they would be running against. That's not the intention of filling this position. You know, I've had a chance to think about, you know, who has stress and an interest, and it seems like what we're really looking for is somebody that can step in right away, hit the ground running, and, at least on my part, it would be somebody that isn't seeking reelection in June, so that we just have a very clean next six months of dealing with city issues, and then, you know, then the community gets to really ultimately decide who they want as their electors.
I agree. I've only been contacted by one previous commissioner, and she, you know, expressed her interest and said the exact same thing, that she would fill out the term and not run, so. But I do agree, we should appoint somebody with past experience and not give an edge to one of the other three that intend on running in June.
Well, I would, are we ready for a motion, or, you know, I would recommend Joe Frenzel filling in the interim position. He has stepped in and done this exact task for us in the past. It went seamless, it was clean, and I think that he would do a good job of stepping up to the mantle.
That's nomination, okay.
I feel very comfortable with Joe. He's got the experience and he's got better things to do than run for election in June again, so.
Okay, do we have any further nominations?
I would nominate Shirley Ducart.
Okay.
From her past experience and the activities that she has been involved with in town, I think she's got a good pulse on what's going on in the city.
And do we have any additional nominations? Okay, now, help me, Ms. Goss, I think the correct way to do this is to vote on the first nominee.
Yes, you vote on the first nominee, and then if you don't have three votes for that nominee, then you vote on the second one.
Okay. Okay, I will ask then, I guess, will we do this as a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will be voting on the nomination of Mr. Frenzel. Mr. Oatmans, your vote.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
And Mr. Decker.
I'm going to have to go no.
I assume that you're going to want to vote for your nominee.
Yes.
And I'll vote for Mr. Frenzel as well, so we would have the three votes, and we'll hope that Mr. Frenzel can join us in two weeks. Okay. Anything else from commissioners tonight? If not, we'll ask if there's anybody from the public that has issues they want to bring to the City Commission? Yes, sir.
President Jackson, Commissioners, I'm sure you're all familiar with me. My name's Frank Holter, I'm the former street, complete manager for the city of Dickinson. Couple of things that I'm concerned about right now is the current management of the city and the practices that are involved with it. What I have in front of me is what was pulled off of the city website, it's the Dickinson Municipal Code, December 2013, and it's supposed to be our HR manual. Over the past two years since I've been involved with the city, not one update has been done to this, not one amendment, not one change in practice. It's officially been tagged the Book of Lies to the majority of the city managers. From what I understand and from what I've been told by the state, since this is a part of our municipal code, it is a legal document. What we do and how the city is operated is supposed to be dictated by this manual. However, it's ignored on a regular basis. There's a lot of employees here at the city that feel the same way. Because I'm now separated from the city, I'm no longer under the gag order, so I can talk to commissioners all day long, anytime I want. I don't have to worry about any kind of retaliation, nothing. I think it's a concern. There's a reason why the turnover rate in the city right now is so high. There's a reason why, and no offense, Craig, because I think you're doing a good job, there's a reason why there's not a full-time city engineer here. There's a reason why the last assistant city director left in such a short period of time. There's a reason why we can't keep employees in our department, and that's because, day to day, every day, this is completely ignored and rules are made up as we go along. There's not a director, a manager in this city that can say that this is followed. I don't believe that. You guys have been kept in the loop. There's a lot of things that go on within the city that the City Commission has kept out of the loop on. That's pure and simple. The day I left. The day I left, our city administrator, Sean Kessel, who got up and walked out of my meeting earlier, failed to tell anybody that I was no longer employed with the city. Nobody. Not one. Since then, anybody else that has said anything has also been told that they're not supposed to talk to you, that they're supposed to keep their mouth shut and do their job and leave it at that. Further, this last Friday, I received a certified letter, and I got it right here from the City of Dickinson. It's signed by Shelley Nohman, the Human Resources Director, who will also tell you that this policy is not followed. This is something that they plan on putting in my personnel file that was never investigated, that was never followed through. Her reasoning in the letter is that Sean Kessel lost it for two and a half months. How do you lose something disciplinary, grievance, for two and a half months and miraculously find it again in December? Ask any director, any person on the executive board, they've all been told. If you guys ask questions, you are to be told you need to go talk to Sean Kessel. That's not made up. That's not an unfair accusation. That's a fact. As our elected city commissioners, the City of Dickinson deserves better than that. For two years, I put in 60 to 80 hours a week, every week. I had one derogatory thing in my personnel file, and that was because of an argument with my, one of my chiefs in my fleet department, of which I didn't argue with, not a single time. You all know me, I don't hide for nothing. I'm not going to deny any wrongdoing that I've ever done. But the last write-up that they tried to give me was a three-day suspension for something that's not contained in the manual, because I made notes on a copy. My own director even said he didn't agree with it. I think you guys need to look into it. I think you need to bring somebody in from the outside to look into it. Internally, you're going to get nowhere. There's a reason why I didn't request to be on this commission agenda, because they're still changing paperwork, still. And they were actually dumb enough to put it in a certified letter. I would just ask that you guys look into it and make the necessary corrections. Otherwise, you're still going to keep losing good people. It's not my fault. It's not another manager's fault. Attitude reflects leadership. And like a bad unit in the military, there's no such thing as a bad unit, only bad leadership. That starts here at City Hall. That's all I got. Thank you.
Can I, were you provided an exit interview?
Nope. Nope. When I walked out of my meeting, I told them that I would not sign that document, that I would be turning in my resignation by the end of the day. Before I made it back to my office at the Public Works Building, which is about seven minutes, my computer was locked out and my phone was shut off. My entire department was told not to come in. By who? I don't know. Everybody was out. Shady business is shady business. The City of Dickinson is growing. It needs to be brought into today's age. I know everybody wants to keep it at population 10,000, where everybody knows everybody. That's not the case anymore, gentlemen. New techniques need to be brought in. The HR manual needs to be updated and actually maintained. The actual excuse that I received for this not being updated is because they all get in a room, they all argue about it, they get mad, and they say, oh, well, whatever, and then they leave it. That's directly from Shelley Nohman. The HR department is not there to tell us how to run the department. They're there to say, this is the book. If an employee has an issue, if a manager has an issue or a question, the HR department is there to say, yep, Article 29 ED, page whatever, this is the rule, and this is how we operate. Every city in the country that's even close to our size operates just like that. You can't do it with this book. It's public information, it's on our website, it's never been updated. To me, that's wrong. And it's poor management, very poor. That's all I got to say.
Appreciate your comments.
I have one. I have one question. You stated at the beginning that you, you said the departments are told not to talk to us.
Correct.
Any employee, or any employee?
If a city commissioner is to ask us a question, this actually came up shortly after you came on. It was in the transition between Commissioner Ducart and yourself. I don't know why. I don't know what the purpose was or what caused it, but that's exactly what was said. If a city commissioner has any questions at all, or they want to know something, they are to be directed directly to Sean Kessel. We are not to say anything, period.
Thank you. Take, take the podium and tell us who you are and...
Kurt Brown, Street Department. I know I've talked to some of you guys about the issues that happened. Might lose my position over this, but best thing that ever happened to the City of Dickinson, Street Department. He has direction. He has focus, and because he stands up for his beliefs, and Sean doesn't like that, it's not right. He's a great guy. He's a leader. He deserves some respect. I don't know what else to say. He's a great guy.
Appreciate your comments as well.
Kurt, how long have you been with the city?
People First.
People First.
Anybody else from the public have issues they want to bring to the commission?
Gentlemen, my name is Joe Carter. I'm a frequent visitor of the dog park. Now, it's getting to be dark at 4:00. I was wondering if the city would reconsider some form of lighting out there. There are numerous people who would like it, who feel safer with it, and I was wondering what process you would like me to continue in order to try to make it happen.
Mr. President, I, the Park District built the dog park. You're talking about one by the south side?
Yes, sir.
I think that's Park District land there. My recommendation would be to start there.
Start with the park.
Yeah. I don't think it's a big issue. I, I shouldn't say big issue. I don't think it's a big project that they couldn't do or someone couldn't.
I understand it had been requested in the past and denied, and...
Well, I think most of the time, it's not nice during December and so on, and it's dark at 4:30, but now it is. I mean, I think you have a legitimate argument there. I mean, it's nice out now, and people do want to take their dogs out in the summer.
Well, there are a lot of people. If it's 40 below and they have a dog in an apartment, they got to take them somewhere, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, there's a, there's a large contingent after dark playing by headlights, so.
I think it's a good request.
All right.
I do, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public have anything for us tonight? Now, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
In a second.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.